Thank you.
I'm Ryan Sprengman, please, President of the League. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Here.
Mr. Perkins?
Here.
Mr. Mathis Smith?
Here.
Mayor Condon?
Here.
Read the approval, Mr. Commissioner Garavalia.
Yes. I hope everybody has had an opportunity to read the minutes. So I would like to make a quick summary on my question.
Second one.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
We're going to jump around a little bit tonight. I'll tell you, Ryan. On public affairs, we have a presentation tonight by Andrew Barr, who is going to be my present representative.
Thank you. Here's some information. Do you think we got just enough? Good mark. I've been here before to talk to you guys. Nothing about our program has really changed, but there's definitely some new faces on the board, so I'll go ahead and just talk a little bit about what it is that we do. What we do is we help communities identify revenue, tax revenue, that they are supposed to be receiving, but for various reasons or not. The Department of Revenue makes mistakes. Ameren is a great company as it is. My dad worked for Ameren CFS for over thirty years in alignment. It's a great company, but they're not in the business of collecting taxes, and they often make mistakes. And we have a very mobile economy now, where people are in and out, they live in different places, they don't, you know, it used to be if you owned a business, you lived in that community that you had a business. Nowadays, people have businesses, they live in different communities. That gets confusing when tax records and things are passing through the system. And so sometimes you have mistakes that are made. Things get coded wrong, and the tax money that's supposed to go to Benton may be going somewhere else. And, you know, there's no magic bullet, or our magic eight ball, that we can determine how much revenue you're going to get back. The numbers are what they are, but we've never had a situation where communities got zero back. We always find mistakes, we always find revenue. The other part of the program is we help you find it. So it's no cost to you to help us go, to go and get that revenue, because it's in our interest to make sure that you start receiving that revenue, because we don't get paid till you get paid. And so how it works is, what will happen is if you contract with us, we will get information from you on kind of what you are collecting right now. We will also look at what the footprint of the community is, what the corporate boundaries are, who should be paying taxes, and we start going through line by line, trying to find any mistakes and anything, and with all the different forms of, not just utility taxes, but all the different forms of taxes that we're able to look at. And then periodically you'll get reports. Once we complete the review, it takes about six months to a year to complete this labor-intensive kind of project here, but once it's done, we'll give you a report, and then we go out and find, you know, again, make sure that the checks start arriving. And once that happens, then we'll send you our invoice. We work on a contingency basis, so that there's no upfront money, it's only on the money that we find, it's all on the back end, and it's a fifty-five, forty-five split. Fifty-five to the municipality, forty-five percent to us. It's a thirty-six month contract, and at the end of thirty-six months, one hundred percent of that new revenue goes to the municipality. And we, you know, you have the peace of mind of knowing that you're getting the money you're supposed to be receiving. And especially where you have West City here with, you know, there's, I don't know for a fact, but I have to think there's got to be some revenue there that may be going to the wrong place that we can find for you. So anyway, that's the overview of kind of what we do, the specifics of how the process works, some of that is in the packet that I gave you. Also, as in there is my card, if you have any questions. If I can't answer it, I will find the description.
Perhaps, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate you. And if you want to go on to your next meeting, you're welcome to, or you're welcome to stay. I think I can stay in my group here. On updates, Ask Rachel Gartner, our P D Relations Director, to update at the Fall Fest, which was canceled last week due to the rain.
Sure. Well, I'll make it very brief. So obviously, we would have needed a ponto and paddleboat to have had the Fall Festival last weekend. So Thursday, we made the decision to reschedule that for November 2nd. And we're very fortunate. Everyone is still on board, and we have been able to add a couple additional organizations to the lineup. We still have all of the activities that the children will be doing, or they would have done before. They've all come over and joined us on November 2nd. So nothing about the event has changed, so that's fantastic. We'll be having it at the Community Park on November 2nd, from three to eighteen. And we still have the shuttle service, so that'll be good, because we do get a large crowd. There are a lot of events going on, so it's going to be a very, very busy day in Benton that day, with the cross-country sectionals. We've got the playoff football game, we've got the Christmas craft fair over at the City Center, and then, of course, our event. So hopefully, everybody will be able to go to those respective events, and then come and have fun at the Fall Fest. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Benton's been blessed by having outstanding, we've got scholars and athletes, and we have scholar-athletes, and we've been blessed by having an outstanding running ranger, cross-country team, and also a football team. And they're both performing on Saturday morning, or Saturday, football team's playing on three o'clock Saturday afternoon, so they're going to have the Fall Fest that evening. So hanging Benton, you've got a lot of stuff going on. Discussing in our approval of the H twenty-six dash forty-six fifty-six construction engineering fee for Airport Terminal Building.
Mayor, that's a document that the engineering firm is required to provide to the IDOT Aeronautics Spartan Screen Bill document that we provide on each of our projects in the past. Sometimes there's public comments made concerning some of the language in there, and we've learned over the past decade that these contracts are set and established by the IDOT Division of Aeronautics and kind of, you know, use that and as they are. This is in particular direction to the new Airport Terminal Building, so we would just take a motion denied to allow you to sign that standard agreement document for the architectural engineering, planning, and special services to continue forward.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll make that motion.
Can I ask, does that money, does it come out of the airport?
Typically, that's what our portion would be.
But it don't come out of the airport, not?
Yeah, and the airport's still part of the city, so.
Yeah, I know, but it don't come out of the general.
That's it. It does not come out of the general, and that is correct.
Tom might like to make the motion to accept. If you need the whole thing read again.
Just for that.
Go ahead and approve all of the H twenty-six dash forty-six fifty-six construction engineering fee for the airport.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
I'd like to make the most of the table, see right now, please. Discussing and approval. We'll stay properly at two oh two East Main. Make the motion, ready table.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Here it is, reading up the story.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes. Somebody wrote that Italian island, and didn't know how to say yes or no.
How much, what's this week's going to be?
From Mr. Mathis to the final resolution for amending the transfer and restriction of funds to the wastewater treatment plant. And that would be dividing up that fifty-five thousand dollars.
So what we need to do then is sixteen twelve will be amended to reduce that amount from fifty-five thousand dollars that's set from sixteen twelve to forty thousand dollars. We need an amendment to do that. We need a motion, excuse me, for that amendment.
Okay, make the motion for to amend sixteen twelve.
From fifty-five to forty.
From fifty-five to forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And that's my portion. I'm going to jump up to accounts and finance report from Commissioner Garavalia. Commissioner Garavalia has invited our treasurer, Lisa, you know, to spread some light on what your G, H, and I portion of your.
Yes. Can we go down to that and let her do that first? Okay. All right. Well, lastly, I'd like to explain what needs to be done in order to set up a fund for sewer infrastructure, and where to move the money from and to. And I felt like I was speaking another, trying to speak another language that I'm not real fluent, and I've had that experience before, being stranded on an island in Italy and trying to find my way out and not able to speak anything but ciao and braci and whatever. So that's kind of where I was at last week. So I invited Lisa, the treasurer, to come and explain the process. She speaks it very well.
Well, all three, or all four are all intertwined, so I just kind of want to give you a little background, because I think it'd be easier to understand if you see the entire picture first. But what Kathy, Craig, and I want to do is we want to start putting back some funds designated for the sewer infrastructure repair or new, you know, for fixing that. The first step in that would be to amend the ordinance eighteen oh four concerning the two-dollar sewer surcharge. And you all have a copy, I gave a copy of the ordinance, the ordinance and the resolution to everybody. Currently, the two dollars per month sewer surcharge is restrictive for debt reduction of the wastewater treatment plan. What we'd like to do is amend section one of the ordinance, and we want the two-dollar sewer surcharge that will be collected, and the money that we currently have in that fund to be used exclusively for sewer infrastructure. And currently, there's a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and three dollars in the account. And it generates about five thousand a month. So that would go, that would at least be a start, so that they can get these repairs done. Step two would be to amend the Resolution sixteen twelve for the transfer of the fifty-five thousand dollars a month from the revenue fund, the wastewater treatment fund. And that, right now, is, was more than what we need. So what we'd like to do is decrease the monthly amount being transferred from fifty-five to forty thousand. And we'd like it to go to the wastewater treatment plan for debt repayment and reduction of the loan now. The semi-annual loan payment is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. So to meet this obligation, it takes approximately forty thousand a month. Then we would like to take, create a new resolution to restrict the fifteen thousand that was previously going to wastewater treatment plant. We would like to take that money and put it in a fund, combined with the sewer surcharge money, so that, to build up this fund for the sewer infrastructure. As we all know, it needs to work. And this is where we think we should be proactive and try to help take care of that problem. So does anyone, I know I talked back, does anyone have any questions?
Let me explain it.
No questions?
Lisa, if on this Resolution sixteen twelve, if we're going to keep the actual amount at fifty-five thousand, it sounds like what you want to basically.
Why don't we do the forty thousand?
But I think what you're saying is this, is you want to put forty thousand for debt reduction, and you want to keep fifteen, and you want to move the fifteen thousand to the sewer infrastructure improvement. So basically, the amount of money's not going to change, it's just going to go somewhere else.
Right. Don't leave that right there.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody understand that? Okay, so ready for the motion? Okay, now we're not? Tonight, we're making motions so that Tom, our city attorney, can prepare the resolution, and then we will come back and vote on the resolution. So I'd like to make a motion that, in number F, letter F, that we, that Tom, that Mr. Mathis to move forward with developing a resolution for amending the sewer surcharge.
Second.
Just for the minute, so what we'll do is we'll amend eighteen oh four that the sewer surcharge will go now to sewer infrastructure improvement. So that's what the motion needs to read.
Okay.
Thank you.
I include that. Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes. I thought it was an Italian island, I didn't know how to say yes or no.
Hey, but we.
Now.
So how much, what's this week's going to be?
From Mr. Mathis to the final resolution for amending the transfer and restriction of funds to the wastewater treatment plant. And that would be dividing up that fifty-five thousand dollars.
So what we need to do then is sixteen twelve will be amended to reduce that amount from fifty-five thousand dollars that's set from sixteen twelve to forty thousand dollars. We need an amendment to do that. We need a motion, excuse me, for that amendment.
Okay, make the motion for to amend sixteen twelve.
From fifty-five to forty.
From fifty-five to forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And then we need to ask Mr. Mathis to work on a resolution for restricting the funds for the wastewater treatment plant debt reduction. And we're going to restrict the fifteen thousand dollars.
Actually, what that will read, Commissioner Garavalia, if I'm correct, and the treasurer can indicate a decision, and I think what we're going to do is we'll do a new resolution taking the additional fifteen thousand dollars of that fifty-five, so let's have a motion.
Okay, a new resolution for that fifteen thousand dollars.
For sewer, I think how we refer, I think how the treasurer refers to that as sewer infrastructure improvement, is that correct, treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, so we need that motion as well.
On your sixteen twelve, you want to make sure that the two for debt reduction and repayment.
To continue on the forty thousand.
Yeah, you want to say forty thousand.
For debt reduction, correct.
You have a second on the last motion. Commissioner Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
No.
Commissioner Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And then the last portion of it is to have our attorney work on a resolution for restricting funds for the wastewater infrastructure, to develop a fund for that, and so that we will have a restricted fund for the wastewater infrastructure and improvement.
And that's basically what we just, we just did, so that's basically fair. So if you understand what we're going to do, is the fifty-five thousand dollars now will be used, forty thousand for debt reduction, fifteen thousand for the sewer infrastructure improvement. So we're completed, correct, treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that takes care of F, and then it's G, H, and I kind of run together, you know, so that takes care of those four for you, Commissioner Garavalia.
Thank you very much for coming and explaining that better than I could.
Do you want to carry on?
Okay. I'll carry on. So to the top of the list, purchase orders, monthly bills, at this time, approval of the payroll. The payroll, we have the general fund, the water and sewer fund, and the airport caretaker. The general fund is in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. The water and sewer, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And the airport caretaker, one thousand, one hundred dollars. And that makes a total payroll of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred, ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. And I would like to go down and break that down for the benefit of everyone sitting here and for the public, and this will also be included on the internet. For accounts and finance, and you can drop these down and add them up if you like, on the accounts and finance, the total for that department is three thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and forty cents. And then for the street department, that total is thirteen thousand, forty-two dollars and thirteen cents. For public property, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. For public health and safety, five hundred dollars. And both of those last figures are the amount of, for the monthly item, or whatever you call, you know, what the commissioners give. And the public property is divided up between the public property and the water and sewer, so the rest of it will come in there. Dropping to the next department, public affairs, that total is four thousand, one hundred, twelve dollars and thirty-one cents. And the police department total is twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred, fifty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the fire department, the total is seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that's the, that gets the grand total for the general fund of sixty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred, seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then the water department is as stated, is the twenty-eight thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. This is just to give more information for the public. And I also included is another, another breakdown, which, out of the general fund, the hourly amount is forty-nine thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. The salary paid contractual is three thousand, one hundred, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. Chief pay, five thousand, five hundred, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And then the elected salary, two thousand, six hundred dollars. And that's all out of the general fund. And then there's, there's, on your papers, you'll see meal reimbursement, street employees working outside of their classification, police department employee disability tax benefits, police department shift differential, acting chief pay for the police department, and overtime for the street department, the police department, and the fire department. And all of that, so for the, with all of that pulled up, the total is fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred, seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. The, that centered on this, on this page that you have, those that I just listed are, they come from that middle column. And then on the water and sewer, the hourly is twenty-three thousand, five hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The superintendent, two thousand, six hundred dollars, ninety-five, two thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents. The elected salary, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then we have sewer employees working outside of classification, water employees working outside of classification, meal reimbursement, and overtime. And so that, that's how you come up with the twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents for the water department. So this is just more information, more transparency, this will be included as well for the, for the public. So I make the motion that the salaries be approved. Mr. Garavalia?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Mathis Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And I have a stack of sewer adjustments, and I will read all of these, and then we'll make one motion. The first one is Marvin Gates at four eighteen.
Commercial.
Commercial, so that is, I thought I had all these written down. Okay, and he had a broken line, and he replaced it with a new line. So I, that one would be approved. Amanda Miller, six nineteen Madison Street, had a water line break in the basement, and she replaced a section of the water line that was in disrepair. Shonda Jenkins at eleven two thirty-eight Sugar Creek Road, had a leak outside at the faucet, and she fixed it. She fixed that leak, had that leak fixed. And then we have Dean Severin, and this is at eight ten South McLean's Borough, and he had a faulty flapper chain in his stool tank, and he fixed it, repaired it, and watched to make sure that it was doing okay. So that one was repaired. John Mayhem, eight oh five South Taylor, he had a leak in the back of the house under the washer and dryer room, and he replaced the whole water pipe that was leaking. And you have David Stock at eleven oh one Election Drive, and he had a garden hose that was untucked from the landscape irrigation, and he shut the water off when he discovered that, that water shut off now. And then we have Carlos Bruto at nine oh three McLean's Borough, and he had a leak at the valve under his house, and he repaired, replaced and repaired that valve. So I make a motion that all of these sewer adjustments be approved, and say need to be taken.
Commissioner Garavalia, I have just a couple of questions. When we do sewer adjustments, do we do it based on the homeowner, or do we do it on the parcel of property? Does that make sense? Like, for example, Marvin Gates, he has multiple pieces of property.
Yes.
If, if one has been filed on one piece of property, can that same person refile on other pieces of property?
I believe upon each piece of property. Do you know? That would be a question for Melissa, but, yeah. I believe it's for property.
Okay. And then just two more questions. On the one for Miller, she talks about how, as a renter, are renters allowed to file for that, or does that have to be filed by the landlord?
The renters can.
The renter can file for that?
Whoever's, whoever's, yeah, the name of the water, they count, yeah.
So is Marvin Gates, it says Marvin Gates, it's okay?
So is Marvin Gates, it says Marvin Gates, so it's okay, it's in his name, the rent, the rent property?
If he has multiple pieces of property, then multiple pieces probably get it, we can get one sewer adjustment.
Yes.
My last question is, on the Dean Severin, he even admitted that it did not go into the sewer, it did go into the sewer. If it went into the sewer, why are we giving him a sewer adjustment, if it went into the sewer? The whole idea of a sewer adjustment said it's not going into the sewer. If it went into the sewer, then shouldn't he not pay for that? Should that, not be declined?
That is true.
I mean, he even admitted it went into the sewer.
Let's remove Dean Severin.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I amend that motion, that is the motion. And then that motion, and we will, I make the motion that all be accepted, except Dean Severin.
I second that.
Is that the one with the faulty flapper?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's one more, there's two, where was that at?
Well, it was, where did that one go? It was, it was a leak on outside faucet.
Yeah, but there's no sewer out there.
Oh, is that, is that, there's no sewer out there?
No sewer out there, they get it just at home.
Are they? That's a good question. If they're on set to get, okay, if that's the case, a sewer leak, then there's no way to accept that one either. If they don't have any sewer, and it'd be a charge sewer, we can't amend it.
We have no sewer.
So then Jenkins and Severin will be declined, where the others will be approved. Assuming there's no sewer on Jenkins. If there's a sewer, then you guys make a motion that you'll accept that. That's fine. Just let the minute show that, clerk.
And I will, I'll, I'll do a few separate motions.
The, the one motion fine, that other thing's where the wording shows that.
Okay. Do you want me to restate it? No, I've got it.
I'll second that.
Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And I will talk with the water department and make sure, because I'm under the assumption that whenever they come through, that they are, if they, if, if there's an application taken for a sewer adjustment, that they have-
That they pay a sewer-
That they pay a sewer fee.
Portion of fee.
Yeah.
Sure.
I will, I'll go make sure that that is, that is indeed the case. Okay. The next is discussion and approval of repairs of the Ford Garage Museum, I'd like to table that. And discussion or approval of appointment to the Historic Preservation Board, I'd like to table that as well.
So motion table being made?
Yes, I make a motion that we table being made.
I'll second that.
Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Thank you. Surfing up to the four, Commissioner Ian Sharp of Perkins Police.
Definitely.
No purchase orders, we do have a, under B, discussion of brutal ordinance. That's my good faithful companion, Mr. Tom Carter, that's not leach aid, like Gatorade, we're not sending any type of funds to help the leaches of the city of Bitterfield. I'd like to quote that that would be changed to L E A T H A T E, instead of L E A T H A I E. I'd like to give permission to go forward, or I'd like to make the motion to go forward on starting to write an ordinance on the leach aid for the sewer plant.
I second that. Commissioner Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
So what is the leach aid? Is it, what's on it all, what we're talking about?
Leach aid is like, any time that you have a, like, say, if a landfill, if it rains, that's a lot of it goes through, kind of, that it kind of causes, kind of like a breakdown of substances, so runoff waters, we can take it into our, kind of, to the, from there, return back.
So if it's large?
No, it'll come from a different landfill, so Craig will be able to give more of the background on that.
Is it what, that's what we're doing now?
That's what we're doing now. I'd like to just make it official, actually.
So we are, are you receiving it from somewhere else?
That's correct.
Have, have we done the studies to ensure that we're able to receive that, is the complication? We're within our margins of range and balances?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're writing right now, and stuff's on it.
I mean, has anybody done the test, to make sure?
Yeah, I mean, EPA has been-
It has to be tested.
It's always all EPA regulated.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna ask. So, so we've had the test done before, we've had the test now, they have it, we're within range, and we're not-
And they want to eliminate it.
Yeah, we're, we want to do the right ordinance to our limits of what we can handle. We want to.
So those, that information will be included in the ordinance about what we can do and not do, and receive and not receive?
We just can't accept anything and everything.
Sure.
And then just like-
Sure. Where's it coming from now?
We have a couple of different landfills, so we do listen.
Okay. So we are receiving it now, we're just, we're making it official.
We're making it official. It's like the official looks at-
Be nice, yes.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
All righty. Under C, I have the discussion approval of grant from the Delta Regional Authority, and I think that was a pretty big deal that we've talked about the last couple meetings, and I've had, I think it was nine hundred and fifty thousand total, we, we got two hundred and six thousand of that, so that was a feather in the city of Bitterfield's cap, so, pretty much, we're gonna make a resolution on that, and do the number for that part. Or like, make the motion to get a resolution number, I guess.
It's fourteen.
Fourteen?
Nineteen fourteen.
Okay, so it'll be a resolution, nineteen fourteen, to accept that. The total grant was two hundred and six thousand, our part will be two hundred and nine, you're sorry, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, for a total project of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars for that. And that will go from North Main, from pretty much Petrop out to the Conservancy District out by DNR, so. And after that, with North Main doing their thing this week, and, but I, I think North Main's gonna be in pretty good shape before long, so. But I'd like to make that into a motion.
Second.
Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Then last but not least, under D, have the approval, approval of payment number two, under Wicks Escuading for North Main. Pretty much everything that you've done so far for the North Main project, minus sidewalks and a little bit here and there, but I'd like to make the motion to approve one hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents to, once again, Wicks Escuading for their job. Well done, I would say, kind of project.
Didn't we, uh, how many times?
But that is the North Main Street to Joplin, that's part of Main, we will have, so, be direct.
How many times did they bust into our water? Did they, did they get into our water?
Well, they had to get into our water.
Well, did they, did it cost some overtime? Do they, do they pay that overtime?
No, they, they didn't, they never got into it.
Okay.
We dig, we start digging, post-horn, we're below.
Okay, okay.
Nothing to be held.
I mean, that would be a tap on them.
Yeah, okay.
Give me five seconds.
You make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
So, Mr. Martin, can I make a point? Uh, speech improved, Mr. Max.
Hopefully, North Main is being improved. Last weekend's rain took a toll on it. I have no, anything to approve or any purchase orders, other than just to say that by the end of the week, weather permitting, North Main should be completely resurfaced. So hopefully that's, that's the plan and the goal, and we'll afford that.
Well, you weather the storm, I'll have to say.
We'll wait for it.
We were pulling out of church, and he and I were laughing, and he, geez, God, standing in the middle of North Main taking photos, okay? And I said, wow, that's where you don't run over him. And then a couple hours later, he had exotic snakes all over him, so I don't know what's going on with that guy.
I'll bring you one.
No.
If you will, if you will get rid of me, just bring them, I'll be quick.
Well, they were, they were gonna, they were gonna go to the circus.
What, real ones?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No, they, they had a, they had a pet show at the Mount Vernon, thirteen-foot Burmese tiger.
Let me know, I'll, I'll be packing.
Anyway, you're, you're doing a remarkable job.
They're doing a good job.
Some people get ran for the money, some people dance for it. Whatever, whatever takes.
Surfing on the Public Council's legislature report, Commissioner Schory? I got three purchase orders. One is for annual ladder, ladder testing, ladder truck, all ground ladders, twelve of them. The aerial, eight oh five, comes to one thousand sixty-seven dollars. This is mandatory, every department, fire department has to have ladder testing, whether they're a payee, volunteer, or what, but they gotta have their ladder. So I make the motion, we accept the ladder testing for one thousand sixty-seven.
Commissioner Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
Okay, the other one is for a generator that went out on one of the trucks, and a cable kit. It's, it's an emergency purchase for one thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. And it was purchased at Gladi Honda, Honda. So I make motion to accept the one thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars.
I second that. Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
What happened to the other generator? What happened to it?
Shot.
Oh.
Yeah.
Shot. Was one of those where, what shot on?
Yeah, it was, it's been in the fire department for, since nineteen seventy.
Wow.
Yes.
And the other one I had is diet team equipment, regulators, I don't know what this stuff is, BCS, hydro testing, for six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, but we had a donation for five thousand dollars, so this will come out with five thousand dollars. That was donated to the fire department for diet equipment. I make the motion, we accept six hundred and thirty-eight.
I second that. Mr. Garalia?
Yes.
Mr. Schory?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Merschman?
Yes.
Mayor Condon?
Yes.
That's all I've got. Thanks, sir. Down to city attorney, I think, and then for ten, this one is business, old business, new business. Matters in the audience? You're up, man, on leach aid.
Hold on a second.
You too.
See, we can't see them.
I make the motion to be adjourned.
I'd like to try to-
Mr. Garalia?
Oh, no, I think I'll stay here a while.
Yeah.